Africa or China.
You have a couple of, a couple of new sketches. I mean, that's a decent size.
So they're probably following the same philosophy.
Being two miles away.
I don't know. They're just getting anybody they can in this.
As you go down through here.
Kathy Kosh saying their enrollment staff too.
I mean, I thought.
This one, then skip.
Some even the public schools number.
They're dropped.
If you look at, I mean, you think about this.
Yeah, I mean, one thing you can say is the.
Seven eleven.
Public schools here are top notch.
Yeah, they're trying to make it push into the market.
You look at any other.
The high level academics, the cast here really.
I'll be in the same process now.
They're exceptional. It's the middle. So I miss.
Pumps in the back like four, four over the road.
That's so fun.
Yeah, McCasky has a good.
Really? It's a big, it's a good campaign.
Sign up for your plot.
It's the challenge with the student base there.
I'd just do it in the next.
I had a friend who taught out there.
I didn't either.
He said, oh, it was funny. He's not teaching anymore. He gave us up because he said the last did not. A lot of kids stole something themselves or something. So on video, parents come into a meeting. Sat there with the principal, teacher, kid. They're watching the video.
They have not. So would it be like one of those in grocery type of restaurants or like a full on restaurant?
Father, he goes.
Oh, okay. You know what I meant? Like a blimpier.
They won't argue with the, from what he told me, says they won't argue with the.
Part of.
You gotta be, he said, that was my last straw. He says, we're watching the video of him taking the phone from another.
Teachers, teachers feel like the principal is not supporting them. Um, but yeah. Well, she's not with me anymore, but my assistant, probably five, six years. She got so frustrated. She just felt like the administration. Couldn't take it anymore. Cause when she, when I interviewed her, I said, you know.
Three weeks.
Teaching is two weeks. Great career. I really love what you're doing. So I was like, is that.
Does the one.
She was good and then she had her second child.
Friday. I get a rundown from them on how.
Which is attractive.
I would be going personally.
What? Women's wrestling. I've read and heard some.
The food's never okay. Never been in that joke. It's just, it's just tape on the screens and sends close. So they spend all that money.
So they could get away with being.
Well, look at me.
They actually poured down.
That's hard.
Actually, the city schools, you gotta get them connected in a positive group.
Well, they're doing this least of days.
Not a lot. At home, just hanging out the streets. Getting in trouble.
Yeah.
The one.
Is that part of the.
The one over there by the, like the go bananas.
They got a good coach.
Oh, yeah, they told. You would think. Their model and their footprint actually stands to that. Yeah. So they kind of use the same. Forced it laid out in its configuration.
To the driveway here. It's disappointing though, because like they have such a cool footprint.
Julie.
I think that's.
Yeah. I'm there just.
Under the gap.
Don't sit there. What's gonna happen? We'll sit down.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the March ninth. East Temple Township Planning Commission. I'd like you to join me in opening the meeting with a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, one of our regular members is not present, so I've asked Mr. Boltby to be a voting member of the seat. And of course, the two other alternates are welcome to join in any of the discussions. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from last meeting from February ninth. Does anybody have any, see anything to correct or add to the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We accept the minutes as drafted.
Second.
Okay, excuse me. I have a motion by Mr. Rohr, second by Mrs. Byrne, that we approve the minutes of the. Yeah, February ninth meeting as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So that would be unanimous, seven to zero. Okay, the first action item this evening is Sunoco redevelopment at five twenty Centerville Road. We have waivers and final land development. Evening.
Evening. My name is Alex Peel with RGS Associates. With me this evening is the applicant, Khalid McGaw. And Jared Neal with Traffic Planning and Design. As noted, we're here to discuss the Sunoco redevelopment project, which is a proposed addition to the south side of the building. As shown up on the screen for a proposed drive through with the intended tenant being Jamba. Before I hit the wrong button here, which one is the laser?
No idea.
No idea. Is it, is the little display on? If not, there's a power button on the side. Get this warmed up for everybody else. There we go. There we go. Got the laser working. So this project may look familiar to the planning commission. We were actually here in, I believe, at the November meeting for a sketch plan to review the project. Since that time, we have worked through the preliminary final plan. Process as far as the review, we've made submissions and received feedback and comments from the township. I'll give a brief summary of the project, though, just as a recap. So the site in the center here, this is the existing Sunoco building and the canopy. This is the same general location as the northern entrance into the site. But if you might recall, there, there is currently a southern entrance. As part of this project, that entrance into the property will be removed. And the northern entrance will turn into a right in, right out, and a left in movement. So no left out movement on the north side of the building. There is also an access easement in place for, to the south, and that connects into the Heritage Hills Hotel entrance out onto Centerville. So there will be two points of access for the property. Really along the north side of the site, there will really be no changes to the layout. These are existing parking spaces. What's being modified is around the back will be lanes for a drive through. Both a drive through and a bypass lane. Also, a, the dumpster that's currently in the southwestern corner of the site will be moved up to the northwestern corner of the site here. There will be the order board in the rear, moving around to the south side. This is the proposed addition to the building, which is approximately fourteen hundred square feet, and this will be the pickup window here. We did include a small stormwater facility here to address stormwater requirements, although we're actually reducing the amount of impervious cover on the project as a whole with the elimination of the southern entrance. I think based on the feedback from the planning commission and/or supervisors, possibly both, we did actually add two parking spaces here in the south. Eastern corner of the, the site, that would be for the proposed Jamba. There's also a walkway that provides access across the front of the building. The thought here was, in those cases where somebody's waiting for an order, there'd be a couple of parking spaces they could potentially pull into here. We did previously have a couple of parallel parking spaces here. We were actually beyond what was required for parking. So we did eliminate those and then, like I said, added the ones here on the southeastern corner of the property. As I noted, we have submitted the plan twice now for the preliminary final review. I think we're down to mostly administrative items and a couple of cleanup items on the plan and agreements. As part of that review process, the traffic design was submitted for the front entrance here, the reconfiguration and the elimination. The feedback we received from the township is that the design was acceptable. So that has been passed on to PennDOT for coordination with the Centerville Road widening project. Just to note there, this is not the initial coordination, just so nobody gets nervous that we hadn't been looking at the plans. We did request the plans, or I say we, Jared requested the plans from PennDOT to make sure we had the current design information. Since that time, he's been coordinating with them, and now it's passed along the plans to PennDOT for any final coordination. Any questions regarding the project?
So you want to briefly go through the motion modifications, I should say?
Yes, absolutely. So in the, the modifications requested for the project, the first is related to existing features within two hundred feet of the subject property. Based on the size of, of the property, we did use a larger scale to make it easier to, to review and for the design process. With that, you don't have as much area shown around the site. We did, though, include an aerial image that covers that two hundred feet around the subject property. And I think based on feedback that we've received from the township engineer, that approach, I believe, was acceptable to them. The next item would be the environmental impact study. This, based on essentially the, the small size of both the property and the project with the building addition, as noted, being less than fifteen hundred square feet. The reduction in the impervious cover as part of the project, and there's no overlay zones of environmental overlays on the property. So we were, we did request relief of, of submitting that environmental impact study. The next item would be volume control. This is for stormwater management. We did perform infiltration tests on the site. We did not have great success with those. So we did design the facility, though, based on feedback from the township engineer to address the rates as far as the pre-post for the site. Also, this project, because we are less than an acre of disturbance, doesn't require an NPDS permit. Currently, just to note, there is, there are no stormwater facilities on the property. So we're actually adding a stormwater facility as part of this project, even with the reduction of the impervious cover. And I believe the final one is related to the road improvements. And that is the in lieu of submitting or doing the overlay for the frontage along Centerville Road, just as that's being done and coordinated with the Centerville Road project, that we would submit a fee in lieu of those improvements to the township. A cost opinion for that work had been, has been prepared by the township engineer and the applicant is satisfied with that estimate for the fee in lieu.
I think I saw a part of that of your review, Scott. And you were talking about the cubic yards or cubic feet or whatever of paving material and so forth. There's nothing in there about the cost of the curbing or the sidewalk. Why isn't that included as a part of the, the fee?
The, the curbing's already, is already present on the site. And I believe your, the sidewalk is part of what you're, what you're doing. Yes, as part of the improvement. Yes, so the sidewalk will be going in. The curbing is there now, but the curbing will be pulled out and put back in again as part of the state projects. That's not really the applicant's liability at this, at this point, to have to replace that curb that is already there. If there was no curb there, we would have accepted a, a fee in lieu of, for the placement of the curb, then applied that towards the, the project that's going through for the overall Centerville Road improvements. But since they already had it, they sort of get credit for, for that part of it. Okay.
All right. Does anybody in the audience have any input or questions about this plan? Or any questions from the commission? Okay, then I'd be ready for a motion on the four modifications.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to recommend granting waiver request one through four in the DMA letter dated February twenty fifth, twenty twenty two, subject to staff and engineering comments.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Caldas, second by Mrs. Will, that we recommend approval of modifications one through four in the DMA letter dated February twenty fifth, subject to staff and engineer comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. And now we need a motion for the plan in general, in total.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of the final land development plan for Sunoco redevelopment, township plan twenty one, twenty two point oh two, subject to staff and engineering comments.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Caldas, second by Mrs. Byrne, that we recommend approval of the final land development plan for Sunoco redevelopment, subject to staff and engineers' comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? So that would be unanimous as well.
Very much your time.
Thank you. Next item is twenty seven, twenty three, and twenty seven, twenty seven Columbia Avenue Sketch Plan. And a waiver from the preliminary plan requirement. Hi, good evening. Brian Cooley with DC Goon Associates. Along with me tonight is Wilson Hershey, who's the applicant and the owner of the property. As mentioned, we're here for the sketch plan and the waiver requests of the preliminary plan. So the property is located at twenty, twenty seven, twenty three, and twenty twenty, and twenty seven, twenty seven Columbia Avenue. I'll just orient the planning commission. Can you, Cindy, can you just pan up a little bit?
Doesn't like your lines, too many lines.
That's good there. Thank you. So Columbia Avenue is on the south side of the site, the residential subdivision to the left. Hurley Industries is up in the corner, and then it's the, the mobile home park is located on the western side of the site. If you recall, I think it was two months ago, we were here for a portion of the property to be rezoned. So we're back here tonight for the sketch plan and waiver requests. So this is located in a community business center in the enterprise zone. So if you recall, the zoning line cuts right through the, the Lassa easement that's on the property. So this front portion is in the community business center, and then the northern portion is in the enterprise zone. Currently, the property is a little over seventeen acres. Currently, there is an existing ten foot access drive from Columbia Avenue. Runs up the property and all the way back to the existing farmhouse on the other property. And there's an easement associated with that access. There is, there is some parking that's located in the back. This lot was brought, bought from Hurley some, some time ago. So the, the parking in this area was used by Hurley when they owned the property. That is public sewer, and it is on lot water at this time. So the owner is proposing a few changes to the plan. The first is a four unit townhouse building located just about in the middle of the site. Many years ago, there used to be an apartment building that was there that was torn down. So this four unit townhouse building will take the place of that existing residence. In addition to that, we are proposing three storage unit buildings. Two located just to the north of that easement, and then one located just to the south. The total square footage of those storage units, storage buildings is twenty five thousand, six hundred square feet. All the storage within those buildings will be with inside the building. They'll be under roof with, with walls and such. There is a proposed twenty four, twenty four foot access drive, which runs from Columbia Avenue. It maintains that ten foot existing path back to the existing residence. And then that twenty four foot access drive then winds back to the existing parking lot. So that access does provide access to the proposed storage units and to the single family residence. I'm sorry, into the apartments. We do have the David Miller letter, which was dated February twenty fifth, twenty twenty two. Within that letter, the engineer does recommend approval of the modification request for the preliminary plan. There are a couple of comments related in the, in the comment, in the comment review letter. One of those has to do with the on lot water. As I mentioned before, there was an existing well, excuse me, excuse me, that was used for that existing apartment. And talking with the, the owner, it's the intent to extend public water from Columbia Avenue to service the apartment building in the back. So this will no longer be on lot water. This will have public water. I know that there's a few other comments in the letter. Certainly happy to answer any questions that the planning commission has, or if there's any questions for Mr. Hershey.
Seemed like there was a, there were a number of questions or comments, or at least pointed out to you about screening requirements.
There is. So this, this project, again, is a little unique in the sense that there's that zoning line that runs through the middle of it. So it seems, I think some of the comments are related to there's certain screening that's required between the two zoning districts, but it is under one ownership. And then there's the, the Lassa easement that runs right through there with the existing Lassa pipe. So I think after we get through the, the planning, or the planning commission supervisors, the waiver, once we move to land development, I think we're going to meet with staff and go over these comments to address the, the screening requirements and the other comments that are in the letter.
And the zoning line is also a property line now?
Is that correct? It is not. No, but it, I think because it's two different zoning districts. Scott, I'm not sure. I think that requires certain screening, depending on the zoning district, and if it's adjacent to another zoning district.
It does.
As, as we're working through this process of sort of formalizing our review of the sketches, we want to first and foremost get the recommendation out on the, on the preliminary plan waiver, and that's what you'd be acting on tonight. And these other items, the, the goal of them is while the applicant's in the sketch plan phase and they haven't gone to production with, with their drawings yet and spent a lot of money sort of working down the road, we want to get some comments out for them to, to think about and be aware of and to start this conversation that we're sure that we'll have with, with Brian soon. So, so those other things, again, are intended to be sort of helpful for the applicant and, and like I said, be discussion starters. And we want to get those out. We, what we really don't want to do, like I said, is see someone put a whole plan set together, bring it in as a final plan, and then have to rework stuff because there was maybe a misunderstanding or, or, or some, some difference of opinions at that point.
Yeah, that's exactly my concern is that, you know, it's a big step to final plan. If there are these, I'll say, sort of major issues, and if, if you're comfortable with that, okay, but realize you're at risk of being denied at the final plan stage.
No, absolutely.
And so just, just feel comfortable with the comments that have been supplied to you.
Okay.
Going forward. Does anybody in the audience have any comments?
That access road that is going to the residence home now, is that being eliminated from Columbia Road up until the townhomes? And then, so the new access road will take that, take that place?
At this time, we're proposing to leave the ten foot access drive. As part of the land development plan, we're going to have to submit to PennDOT because it's a state road.
That is a state.
Yeah, so ultimately, you know, PennDOT would have the say as to whether, you know, because on, when we enter on the south side of the, of the site, there's a proposed twenty four foot access, and there's a certain distance then to that ten foot existing access.
Thirty at the entrance there, and then it goes to a ten, I didn't, but it's a shared access, right?
Yes, that's a shared access between this property and then the property to the back.
You have essentially two roads to going back to the same property.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
Mr. Hershey, just make sure you sign in.
Oh, you did. Thank you.
It's in Hershey. If I could address that, that ten foot that comes in also, La Pores use that. They have an apartment building. I think they have seven housing units right at Columbia Avenue. So even if, if we were told not to use it, somebody's going to be using it because they have a right of way to use it also. In practice, I believe the farm will use the wider, easier access road. But I, at least the first part of the other road is really not ours to seal off because La Pores. There, I think you can see one of the buildings that, that apartment building has four units in it. One of those, if I'm looking correctly. Yeah, it's real near Columbia Avenue. They have a white, a big house near Columbia Avenue. There's, I believe, three units in that, and then the apartment building behind it has four, and they use that driveway.
Just want to just clarify, that zoning line is just a second property. It's just one contiguous property, or is that going to be two properties?
No, just one contiguous property. At the top of your map, and Cindy, you don't have to scroll up. Where, where the road went past the proposed apartments and the storage, and then went over to the parking from Hurley. Does that also go through then to the street? Is that Industry Drive over there?
There, there is a week.
Okay. And this will be considered all a private drive, not a road?
Yes, that's correct.
Do any of the commissioners have further questions?
Only thing I, I would ask is, is the access drive designed so that fire services can traverse through the site and properly fight a fire if need be?
Yeah, so right now, you can see that there is a thirty foot access, access width in the front here. So right now, the, the existing parking lot that's in the back, we're proposing to utilize that for RV and boat storage. So the, the access drive that was located along Columbia Avenue is designed for the turning movement for a forty four foot RV. So that would more than likely accommodate fire access into the site. As part of land development, I'm assuming we'll have to get fire department approval and run those truck turning templates.
A full review from.
A full review from emergency services is part of the final plan approval. So they'll have they'll have the opportunity to see that and the applicant likely will have to show. The applicable turning templates for the fire trucks that would serve that area as part of their as part of their submission.
How far is that first building from Columbia Avenue?
The storage unit here?
Yeah, any one of them. I'm just thinking closest fire hydrant.
Well, so the public water is going to extend along the access drive. There's more than likely going to be a fire hydrant placed back near the units back there. That's Lancaster City Water Services.
Yeah, I'm I'm I guess I'm with Jim. I mean, as long as the applicant understands the risk, uh, we're not taking action on the sketch plans. So by waiving the preliminary plan, you're coming in with a final. So you want to make sure staff's on board and you get everything worked out.
Yes, and you know, the the letter that's provided is an excellent checklist. Um, and it's it's good meeting points when we meet with the township to go over these items. Because there's certainly value in addressing these items upfront prior to submitting a final plan. Okay, if there are no further comments or questions, I'm ready for a motion on the request for a waiver of preliminary plan.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We recommend to the supervisors waiver of the preliminary uh plan filing. Um, subject to staff and engineer comments.
Mr. Chair, I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mr. Palakowski, that we recommend approval of the waiver of preliminary plan filing for the. Um, I'm sorry, for the Columbia twenty three, twenty seven and twenty seven. I'm sorry, twenty seven, twenty three and twenty seven, twenty seven Columbia Avenue Sketch Plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed. So that would be unanimous.
Thank you so much.
All right, the third plan for review is Sheets at Florrie Mill and the same as this last plan. It's a waiver request for preliminary plan.
Evening. Uh, thank you for having us this evening. I know it was a little bit of short notice, but we did want to present the plan this evening for. Um, just for observations and presenting the plan. Uh, we'll be back in front of you guys with uh final plans for uh moving forward with the project. Um, so I guess what I would start out with is um, we can kind of start out with the proposed conditions here. We have a rendering up on screen right now. And we're looking at a six thousand square foot sheets uh store along with six fuel islands out front. Um, it is connected uh via two different driveway access points. One located on Roerstown Road and the other one on Florrie Mill Road. Um, both of those roads are township roads, um, even though some of you may be familiar with Roerstown Road as a state road. Um, it was actually given back to the municipality uh in the past. So we've done a little bit of research on here um with regards to that information. And some of the items that we are looking at is the existing property. So there is um some items on the existing property with regards to easements, right of ways, so on and so forth. So um, excuse me, we've currently pulled an ALTA and pulled a title commitment and uh title research on the property. And we are going through those items currently right now. Um, but to stay in the proposed uh for what we're showing here on the proposed. Um, excuse me. What we would be looking at is a sheets with a drive through. Um, the drive through then also would be uh going around the rear of the facility uh with a bypass lane. Um, so that you do have full site circulation in one direction around the facility itself. If you were to choose not to actually enter into the drive through. In addition to that, um, we've also looked at this with regards to stormwater management control as well as. Um, some landscaping and buffer requirements. And uh, we are attempting to try to do everything above ground. Uh, so we're trying to not put anything underground from a stormwater standpoint. Adds a little more beautification to the site and adds a little greener. Uh, uh. Aspect as far as uh kind of just the overall site look. Um, in that being said, we've proposed three uh stormwater BMPs here. Uh, we are actually in a reduction of impervious, so I'll go a little bit into the existing conditions just to give us some background on that. But uh, we are actually reducing the impervious coverage so that uh we will be have to, excuse me, we will have to go and uh get an MPDS permit. For the disturbance of the of the site. Um, however, the um. The goal here is to present a green plan. Uh, we are next to the little Conestoga Creek on the right hand side. Um, of the plan there, uh, we are staying back outside of the flood plain. Uh, so there will be no impacts into the flood plain. Uh, a proposed retaining wall is along the right side of the drive through. And that is actually to keep us back without uh disturbance into the flood plain. In addition to that, there is an existing sanitary sewer easement and also a waterline easement. Um, the sanitary sewer, let me back that up. Sanitary sewer easement goes from uh up. Uh, north to south on the plan along the little Conestoga Creek. And then the waterline easement uh goes around the Florrie Mill Bridge. Um, you can kind of see that I I'll actually ask to see if we can. Um, Cindy, if you could go to the the sketch plan itself, please. Thank you. Um, so we provided uh the zoning data tables and and the site information here along with the parking summary. Uh, we are proposing forty nine spaces and um the requirement is uh forty nine spaces as well. So as you can see, we are staying back beyond the uh floodplain boundary, which runs parallel to the proposed retaining wall. It also then goes to the rear of the property, uh continuing on with the uh small tributary that's a contributor to that to that creek. Um, to the rear of the property is a buttonwood drive, which is uh noted up on the top of the plan. Uh, that's an existing drive that is uh runs through the property. So this is also a lot consolidation, which will I'll slowly transition over to the existing conditions to identify that. So um. That being said, we will be um getting rid of the private drive uh between buttonwood. Uh, excuse me, the buttonwood private drive between the two existing properties. Um, in that being said, there are some utilities that also run through that private drive access. Uh, we will be rerouting those and coordinating with the utility providers to to do so. So there's um, there's a quite a lot of stuff going on existing conditions. So I guess I'll I'll move to the existing conditions just so that we can have a. A clear understanding of of what we would be doing uh in the initial steps uh for the proposed land development. So the uh, again, this is going to be a lot consolidation plan. Um, as you can see, uh, there's two existing buildings. Um, two existing parcels with buildings on them, I should say. Uh, the main parking area associated uh known as premise C. Uh, which is the note to the north of the north of the plan. And then there's also premise A and premise B on the left side of the plan. All three of these parcels will be consolidated. They are actually under different titles. However, I believe if I'm correctly saying that they are actually the same owner. So it is all ownership by the same entity. Um, but different titles, if that makes sense. Um, so what we are actually doing is we are going to uh remove the buttonwood drive and the access to the rear of the property. Uh, the access to the rear of the property is actually um going out to Roerstown Road. And um also services the rear parking lot, which I believe. Uh, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but is an annex parking lot to the the main facility to the rear, the uh auto sales or auction place.
So where does Buttonwood go to the north?
Uh, Buttonwood Drive then ends up up at the north there.
At at the corner of the property. It looks to me, it looks like it extends to the top of the picture.
Yes, it continues on to the next property. That's correct, to the rear.
And. Okay, so where how do you get to that property if you cut off Buttonwood?
The access to that rear parking lot is through the main facility, the main um car auction facility up to the north.
Is that like Enterprise or Enterprise Road?
Enterprise, what's the next one over?
To connect commercial.
Commercial.
Commercial. Do they, do they use, do they use that access at all?
They do not. Um, part of the lease agreement with uh Sheets is the the elimination of that driveway being acceptable.
So it's not an emergency access drive or anything for.
Not that I'm aware of. Yep.
Excuse me. Just to clarify for you, just to clarify, the. Entity that was occupying this building was a detailing. And they would bring the cars up from the auction through the back gate.
Oh.
Up to this facility.
Okay, that's who was occupying it.
Lots, yeah.
So they had a they had a shortcut into the.
Right, yeah, and then they would take the cars back that way so they could auction.
That would make sense because of the the existing fencing actually is towards the rear of the property, like you have access from the rear. That makes sense. Okay. So for the existing conditions, there are some, uh, like I mentioned, there's some uh title discrepancies that we all want to make sure that we're uh aware of. Uh, and click clarified for the final plan, uh particularly out in the front of the um. Of the existing property, there's a large grass island out front that is actually within the right of way. Um, so that is actually, I believe, Scott, I think we determined it to be township property.
Right.
So um, we're going to get that all cleared away and get squared up um with regards to that. And then uh continue on with the lock consolidation plan as part of the final land development.
So backing up one second, you said forty nine spaces for parking?
Yes, sir.
Similar to what you guys have on state and up in Mount Joy, or is that lesser spaces or more?
I believe it's about the same. I'd have to verify the specific number, but uh I want to say forty seven is clicking in my head right now, but forty nine, forty seven, somewhere around there. It is adequate parking for the facility itself. Um, we did uh receive the letter uh and take a look at it. Um, these uh, these comments are definitely, again, very helpful. Um, working with Scott um pretty regularly now at this point. So um, we are going to take these comments back and and refine them with regards to the land development plan. Uh, particularly, one of the items that was mentioned in the review letter was uh zoning item number two. And that was just uh with regards to a type B buffer between the commercial properties in within the enterprise zone. Uh, that would be the property line along the um west of the property uh for the um. Uh, the uh. I'm not sure exactly what the function is of the 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 facility to the to the left of the property, but. Uh, the one with the vans and all the parking there. So what we are showing right now is uh and we're not asking for any decisions, of course, this evening. But what we are asking, we we are showing here is a proposed uh type B buffer with an alternate design. And that alternate design is uh twofold request and onefold it is for continuing on with the same green stormwater management idea that we've had thus far. And then also, there also is a proposed utility line there. Um, so there is a uh power line that has to go through the property, which currently goes through Buttonwood Drive. And what we will be proposing is to go around the facility itself um by diverting it around the side. I spoke to subdivision land development number four. That was for the fifty foot right of way. That's present on the subject property. Um, that's the buttonwood drive. And uh, again, we are going to go through our uh our due diligence as far as clearing all the easements and making sure that that's the case. So um Sheets does a very good due diligence. Um, they don't want any easement sneaking up on them anytime in the future, so. Um. And then uh number six uh talks about uh any kind of future known modifications. Uh, with regards to this facility, um, basically, I I believe this what we're looking at here now and there's no uh. No plans in the future for any expansions. Uh, we did discuss uh just in brief earlier that there was a comment with regards to uh potential uh islands. Uh, planted islands at the corners of the facility. Um, the standards for sheets are typically striping. Um, I know uh we'll have to take a look at what we did on state road, but I believe we'll we'll be doing similar. Um, just so that we can show uh the the green areas at the end of the parking rows in the front face of the building. And then uh the final comment here is uh the streets and sidewalks. Uh, number one, uh, they just recommendation that uh we talk with the municipal, talk with the township. Uh, with regards to any frontage improvement requirements. Um, at this point in time, we're not proposing any frontage improvement requirements. Uh, there is no connecting sidewalk, um, and the existing curb line is to remain uh with the uh exception of the the new driveways.
So you'd be requesting a modification or a waiver of sidewalks?
Yes, if they would be required. A deferral could also. Um, well, that concludes my presentation, um, Steve. So we uh we're anticipating on coming back probably in a month or two. Um, so it'll be pretty short. Uh, they like to build so that you can use them as fast as possible. So with rising gas prices, I think that'll be pertinent.
On a side uh side subject, how Centerville Road? Um, Columbia Avenue Sheets coming, do we know? Okay, I mean, I just, I was. Well, I was driving, I drove by like a week ago and still, you know, looked like a construction site, so I just wondered what the plans were. Okay. All right, uh, are there any comments from the audience about this plan? About other commission members?
I do have a question. Do you know when the state gave back the uh road back to the to the township?
I don't know, but the latest PENDOT mapping does show it as a uh, I I forget the terminology. It's a a turnover road. I think it is what they call it. Um, so the actual limit of the state route is actually at the interchange of the off ramps. Uh, I believe it's not shown on this plan, but there's a one more stoplight towards the interstate.
Yeah, I I think this will be a good redevelopment. Project on those two properties. It should work, so. But just as we said to the last applicant, when we wave the preliminary plan, that doesn't mean we're. Throwing our support at the sketch plan. I mean, we're going to evaluate the final plan.
Absolutely.
When that comes in, so.
Yeah, we're we're just here tonight to present and see if you have any feedback or comments that I can or that we can incorporate in in before the final plan.
But you would like a waiver of the preliminary plan?
Yes.
Requirement. Yeah, because you'll probably have some some waivers and things with this site. Anytime you got redevelopment, you're going to have to work around things.
Yes, that's correct, yeah. Yeah, it's the the challenges of redevelopment, but as as was stated, this is a good use for it. It's a great location. And um, we are trying, we have the ability to go green, so that's always a positive.
Beth has met with the applicant um prior to discuss this plan and to talk about traffic issues. And we've sort of given some directions and thought on that. I'm sure that you're working through that. You didn't mention traffic. It's a minor component of this, but I don't know if you wanted to like touch on that at all since since you're consultants here.
Thanks. Good evening. Eric Mounds, Traffic Planning and Design. Uh, Scott, to your point, we did take some of the the preliminary feedback we received. Uh, the initial kickoff meeting, uh, we are in the process and actually recently wrapped up some preliminary analyses. Uh, the intention is we're going to reach out to uh Townships Traffic Consultant Chris, Chris Bauer over at McMahon. Have a conversation on our findings, but the intention is per the plan. Uh, it would be the a right in, right out driveway to Roerstown Road. And a full movement driveway to Florrie Mill Road. Uh, driveway to Florrie Mill is pushed basically as far away from the traffic signal. Driveway to Florrie Mill is pushed basically as far away from the traffic signal as we can. And by doing so, we can line up with the driveway across the street as well, creating that, that four-way intersection that. If you're familiar with the site today, there's actually a slate offset with the driveway for this site actually being closer to the traffic signal. So preliminarily, we're finding the results are pretty favorable. Going to continue to work with, with Scott's office and McMahon through a traffic impact study for the site, but seeing tension. We are finding, we do anticipate some widening along the, the frontage to Roarstown Road. To provide a separate right-hand turn lane going northbound on Roarstown to get into that driveway. So basically, as you come through the, the signalized intersection, there would be some widening to the north of the signal to get. People entering the site out of the main, main travel way and then into the driveway. So we're gonna continue to coordinate. I mean, what we're trying to do is, is work a lot of the preliminary items out with McMahon. Prior to doing the full detailed traffic study, just to make sure we're all on the same page as far as access configuration and whatnot.
Would you design that pork chop?
Yes.
Would you please make it as exaggerated as possible?
It was actually one of the, the very first conversations I had with Chris was. To the extent possible, exaggerated as much as you can.
Absolutely, cuz people will turn left. I, I just know it.
And I guess to that point, I guess just as a, just one more point on, one of the things we did talk about. For that exact reason, we talked about, did it make sense to try and figure out a way to potentially allow a left-hand turn movement? From Roarstown Road into that driveway and design for it. It just doesn't work with the site layout and the, the frontage available. It locates that left turn would basically be in the back of the left-hand turn lane approaching the signal. So you get into that driver confusion of where you would be turning, so. We basically dropped it at that, that said it will be a right-in, right-out driveway with access off of Florrie Mill. Sure you're all familiar, but the, from a traffic count perspective, Florrie Mill relatively minimal volumes, obviously compared to Roarstown Road.
Southbound on Roarstown really backs up there, is a lot of traffic, so.
Agreed.
Don't wanna give any temptation for people to turn left.
Basically what you have, I mean, I'm, I'm probably gonna state what I'm sure all of you see on a regular basis. This, the Florrie Mill intersection and the two-eighty-three westbound ramps actually operate under the same signal control. So it basically functions as a signal intersection. So it's making sure that, the, the piece in between basically stays cleared out and any queuing you have of vehicles occurs on the, the northern and southern limits of it. So to your point, our analyses are showing that that southbound approach during certain time periods, particularly the afternoon. It has some queuing on it. So that's why, again, right-in, right-out access to Roarstown Road.
I'm guessing that township sliver of land was, when they curved the road, I think it used to come out a little bit more in an angle going to the north.
Agreed. A New York question about the turnback. We think it was two thousand eighteen, nineteen timeframe that it was done from all the records and plans. Scott, I think you noted, there was a map from two thousand seventeen that still showed as a state road. We went back through some of the old state straight line diagrams. I think it was two thousand nineteen that it officially got turned back. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, I guess we're ready for motion.
Mr. Chair, in motion to recommend approval of the preliminary plan waiver for sheets Florrie Mill Road as presented subject to staff and engineering comments.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Palakowski, seconded by Mr. Calvis, that we recommend approval of the preliminary plan waiver for sheets Florrie Mill Road. Subject to staff and engineers' comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So that would be unanimous, seven to zero. Okay. Some new plans coming.
Happy Tales is requesting a. Waiver of final plan.
Has somebody checked to make sure? I don't think they have, but has ever been one for the property. Another waiver. Please check. I, I don't recall one, so. I've been a while, been here a while, but my memory could be lapsed.
Represent Happy Trails?
No. Wait, not, not yet. We got a couple more things.
Let me know.
Have a seat.
Okay.
Yeah.
Doesn't sure. State Road Commerce Park is also coming back in to modify their plan to address their, their landscaping issues along the frontage there at State Road. Did have two others, two hundred Plain Tree. That's another redevelopment project. That building is gonna get raised and rebuilt.
Where was that? I'm sorry.
Hundred Plain Tree, south of Old Tree, it's a cul-de-sac. So that's coming in. And also the, we're anticipating a text amendment coming in for Brookside Apartments. For the apartments to the far east side of, of that project. They need a text amendment for height on that, and then they also need. A text amendment to address the restaurant, which is asking for a drive-through.
Like next to Sheets.
It's not there now.
It's not there now.
West of Sheets.
If you're looking at Sheets to the right, so to the south more. The preliminary, the, the master plan, the preliminary plan showed a pad for a freestanding food type. It was very unspecified, but a freestanding food service there. And I think that the idea would be to, the potential tenant needs a drive-through. And a drive-through is not a permitted use for food services in that, in that zone. It is for convenience, but not for food service like that for a restaurant, so, so they would need some relief of that.
Yeah, I was thinking the, the sheets is the same way here. They've got a drive-through, but it's a convenience store, so it's allowed. It's not a Wendy's, so. They're okay.
That one we still have not heard back from.
So maybe the text member coming in might fix that, who knows? Those are all the plans that I, that I'm aware of.
Okay. Old business? We're gonna be talking about signage next month?
You are? County comments by then, and then it'll be on your agenda.
I think we had a copy of your project report. It's potentially electronically. Is there anything you want to highlight there?
Not really.
Okay.
I had one question on that. There was a comment in the Coldbrook Apartments that they're asking for zoning relief. What, what specific relief?
Density.
They have twenty-five acres to the back of their existing buildings that they want to put more apartments on.
Right, so they're gonna request a zoning density relief?
It's a, it's dimensional relief for additional, yeah, density. And that was the determination made by the township's zoning officer that that is what they would need. There was some confusion when they made their first application. That was corrected. And they came back in with a corrective application for the zoning hearing board.
So that'll go to the zoning hearing board for that.
That's what you'll say, if not, back to the drawing board.
Okay, now we're to public comment. If anybody has any comments, please state your name and address and give us your comments.
My name's Dave Kraft, and I live at one oh-two Eisenhower Boulevard, which is right behind Little's Grocery Store. Anybody's familiar with that? I have a church across the street from me that has put some new lighting up. And to me, it's, it's pretty extreme. I don't have any of this, but I do have a few pictures if, if somebody, if you want to look at them of the lighting, I can pass them around.
Yeah, we, Dave, we'll, we'll probably, we'll probably pass that on to staff for them to review.
This is from my house. When you flip it over, you'll see, looking back at my house. It's not a good picture, but the lighting comes and I haven't worked what's going on there, so this is actually. In December, they put up some new lights and there, there's LED lights extremely bright. And I went over to the church first thing and talked to the church and I didn't talk to the pastor, so nothing happened. So in the interim, I, I contacted the township by sending them an email. Told them about the lights. And that they were new lights, they weren't existing lights. These are brand-new lights put up in the building. And I don't have the exact reply, but it was from Mr. Sturgis. And he said, we don't get involved in this sort of thing. So I went back over to the church a while later and talked to the pastor himself. And I asked him, I said, I don't mind the lights that they're on all night. I said, is there any way you could, when you don't need them, just turn them off? And he said, no, can't do that. He said, there's all kinds of dirty deeds in the parking lot overnight. Like sex and drugs and defecation. I said, okay, I understand. I said, what about motion detectors? No, he says that won't work. And I said, well, what about shields? And he said, well, then they won't extend to the end of the parking lot. And I said, okay, I said, I'll probably go out to the township, present my case to them. He didn't seem to like any of my ideas. So I'm not sure what to do here. Mr. Sturgis didn't seem to be interested in. Looking into this, and I'm wondering, who would?
If I could answer that question, we did look into it and we have nothing against what they're doing. We have no rule or regulation that, that we can go after them for it. You've done as much as you can do. The last I heard about it was that you couldn't reach out to anybody, you couldn't contact anybody. And we were attempting to contact somebody for you, and I don't know that occurred. But there's essentially, we would just be asking. There's nothing that mandates them to not do what they're doing. Which is why he couldn't help you.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Essentially, there's no rule or regulation that he's violating. No. No, there, there's, there's nothing that we, we can ask him like you have done, and he come back, he comes back with excuses or answers, whatever you want. No, he's not violating any zoning ordinance.
And I don't know where the pictures got to, but those windows on my house are about twenty feet above the parking lot. I just didn't see any reason why they need to be that high. You know, if they came out, you know, six feet or so, but he doesn't seem to want to work with me. I'm not sure why. He seems to be pretty dead set on. So there's nothing I can do.
Little, Little was a new project, so if it's a new project, if they go through land development, yes, we can do what you just said, is to limit it, put shields on. They would be required to do that, but it, it would be no different than a neighbor, another neighbor putting up outdoor lights. That are shining in the wrong spot and there's nothing we can do. There's, there's no violation.
Well, I thought I'd come out and try. Cuz they're very annoying, and I'm sure if they went up across the street from your houses, you would be annoyed.
Yeah.
I guess.
Pictures are over here.
Here you are.
The whole way around?
Yeah.
Yep.
They're, they're, they're definitely obnoxious, but.
They're extremely annoying, and you know, like, and that's what they look like.
Yeah, small packs.
Yeah, this one here was just, this is an arbor by the hedge along my driveway, right in my bedroom, where there's my kitchen windows down here and it's right in there. I just don't know why they gotta be with the lighting here.
Yeah.
They're bright.
Sounds like porch.
Feet off the ground and doing exactly what he wants him to do. Oddly enough.
Looks like that place is right here.
Neighbor draws the street, doesn't mind.
To each his own. All right, well, sorry, we, sorry, we couldn't help you.
Well, thank you and have a good evening.
You too, Dave. Thanks, thanks for waiting.
Cindy, I had, had a question if he's finished. I was curious if West Hemfield has had any conversations with us about their plans for this section of. Land between, along Stony Battery between Nolte and the old QVC.
They haven't had conversations. We did get a copy of the, the petition for the rezoning.
So they're looking to rezone that, I guess.
Yes, about fifty acres in there. Or QVC.
Just on the same side as QVC?
It's, well, the buyer of the QVC building wants to expand. And you remember when QVC wanted to expand that they said, no, they wouldn't rezone land for them, so. Now they're looking to rezone a lot of land and make a business park there, so. I wasn't excited about it.
It's also outside of their urban growth boundary.
Yeah, that's what, you know, so they're gonna, are they gonna move the urban growth boundary or can they?
Have to, I guess, yes.
That's a request. Obviously, West Hemfield hasn't acted on, on this request yet.
Yeah, it's all farmland, so the farmers are calling me, so they're all, they're upset. Because they.
Except for the farmer that would be selling, I guess.
Yeah, that's Dave Ginder, but they've actually even talked to the neighbor farmer. That would be, that would come right all the way up to Nolte Road there, that they would consider rezoning that as well. So it would be even more acres, but. Some vision of a business park there, I guess. Which I understand, we put, you know, we had land that built warehouses along Stony Battery, but that was zoned. For probably as long as that railroad spur was put in. I mean, that's, that was industrial a long time. I don't know, I just think Stony Battery is gonna get swamped with trucks. I wish West Hemfield would expand over Prospect Road and Columbia Avenue instead of Long Stony Battery.
If it's any consolation, Stony Battery will get widened a little bit. Probably this year and then resurface next year.
Yeah, so, okay. Well, I didn't know if they contacted us about concurrency.
Yes.
Doesn't excite me.
The board supervisors didn't really make issue of it, but.
Yeah, I mean, there's been a changing of the guard of the West Hemfield supervisors, so.
Yes.
Previous supervisors would not have rezoned ag land.
Okay, is there anything else? Anybody else have anything for the group? If not, then we will adjourn the meeting, eight oh five.